Monday, June. Six P M, fellas. You're reading that. There's a lot. So, uh, we'll start with roll call. Uh, Trustee Woods here, Owens here, High Tower.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Booker here. And one to six key tonight. Okay, uh, next we'll do pledge of allegiance, everyone, please stand.
But even just to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any persons desired to be heard?
There are none.
I know there's nobody. Uh, the legislative officials or staff reports? Uh, so next would then be the consent agenda. Uh, that includes consideration of minutes except May twenty five voucher, consideration of uh, twenty five twenty six liquor license for permitted mock beverage, uh, renewals. And consider approval of the construction services, uh. Here we go, approval of the construction services. Staking in Advent, approving with Capore for Franklin First Street reconstruction project from West Brownie Road South. Uh, one hundred to Beach Court. Any issues, concerns, discussions we have? Yes. Um, Matthew is. This department centered from the reconstruction of the bridge.
So this is a good time to be the comment on that. I was gonna do it under staff report, but this also, um, is a perfect time to talk about that. So remember, we had two projects out here on the fifty first street. So there was one that was a hundred percent DOT or federal funded through local bridge program. That was our Bridge over Beaver Creek. And then, uh, the other portions of the roadway reconstruction were village fund. Okay? And so what you see torn up right now, that's all the village project and you'll notice we gapped the bridge. Why did we do that? Well, the, the bridge, unfortunately, the state rejected all of the bids and I'll put bids in quotes because we just had one bidder for this project. Uh, so we, there was a couple of things that were late here. Um, there was, we were in the, the state sets the, the letting cycle or the opening bidding cycle. Okay, we're in, we were in a late cycle. Um, there's also just a ton of work happening in the greater metro area. Drive around and there's a ton of construction work happening and a lot of this is bridge work. So there were four plan holders on the project. We had seen a tech who did bid on it. Uh, we had Wanda Kramer and then, uh, sheet pile over. Those were our four. Um, three of them chose not to bid due to workload issues. And then we had the one bidder Xenithack. And his bid was five hundred and sixty thousand dollars over our federal funding. So what does that mean? Um, we could have accepted it, but then the village was on the hook for a hundred percent of those old bridges. Well, we don't have a five hundred and sixty thousand dollars laying around, so he said, no, you know, we're gonna, not gonna do that. Um, so the state rejected it. They had to put together and kind of include some of this language in the memo. Um, of some reasons why that bid was bad. Uh, we are still pretty confident in the estimate and budget for the project. Uh, it was just that Xenithack, I think, didn't want the project, but if you were gonna pay him, we'll do it. And so they, there was a couple of items in there that were just way out of whack. All right, so they were extremely high and not even close. Um, I'll put another frame of reference. So our bridge will be a single span bridge and it's just over Beaver Creek. Um, in a similar letting cycle, I don't know if it was our same one or just previous. It was a three span bridge, triple, over the Milwaukee River. That came in at one point seven million. Our bridge that we opened, one point five million. So something doesn't quite add up, uh, and so we chose to reject all the bids. And we're gonna rebid this project in December of, um, twenty twenty five for a twenty twenty six construction cycle. Um, the engineer and the state are reevaluating our estimate and budget. Uh, but if there is something where hey, there's a big price increase, I'm gonna say steel or some concrete. They will ask for something more. But there also could be a chance that, uh, the village might have to kick in some more as well. And this is the time to do, to, to look at that because we're going through our capital improvement program, uh, which we typically approve in August. So it's the time to nail all that down, but we're still pretty confident in the overall budget. I think our, our federal funding limit is just shy of one point one billion. That, that feels pretty right for the project. Okay? Um, so anyways, the bridge is not happening this summer. Um, the rest of the roadwork will continue as is. The contract you have in front of you is similar to how you've seen these structures in other previous road projects where after the bidding is done, we'll, we engage in some construction oversight and maybe stating that's the layout. Kind of the same thing that come. That's what we have before you consent for the floor, but this completely eliminates and excludes all of the bridge work. So. I guess, good and bad, you'll be able to drive up and down fifty first street. It's gravel right now for a little while, but that will get paved. Um, and the bridge will leave. However, we have to come back next summer and do the bridge section. Um, we won't be driving or impacting any fifty first street traffic as part of this because we luck out where Beaver Creek Parkway is. That moves around the brownie road. And that's right in our bridge project. So all of the construction traffic will be on that portion by Beaver Creek Parkway and fifty first street.
Just so you know, um, this went before the public works, the location, about, about this pretty extent. It was a good.
So because the, the public was made aware of the construct, the repainting and the bridge work. Have they been notified that the bridge work is not happening because now the question is, do we pressure the money and then just cut out a section? Because they were, you know, when you prepped them to like, everything is gonna happen at one time and then it doesn't happen, then the question is, why is it not happening?
So I did put out a letter, uh, just before Memorial Day, uh, stating an update on the project to a pretty large part of the map. Your neighborhood was probably not included because you guys have that access to county line early. Um, but yes, we did put out, uh, to all impacted residents with that bridge that it was not happening. And, oh, and we had a public information meeting, um, I think that was before, June four.
Yeah.
It was early, yeah, week and a half ago, we're, we informed people as well.
Okay.
It wasn't largely attended, but there were folks here.
Okay, so my last, I mean, it's, I, is there, yeah, I'm gonna need to put something in the update. Cause they, you know, when you live in a community not that's warm outside, everybody's best walking and seeing and everybody's making assumptions that are absolutely incorrect.
Yeah.
Cause maybe the, the mailer that you did and the information is not going to, like, the people who walk in or the people who just drive and, and not really, uh, reside in that.
Was it last week or is it this week it's going in?
So Carrie actually put a, a thing in tracker, um, an update on fifty first street and she did mention that the bridge was not happening. And we'll have that now kind of front and center on tracker every week.
Okay.
Yeah, so something was put in there on the cast Friday.
Yeah, cause that's not coming, reach the tracker.
I know, which is good enough to be as I read.
So, uh, I did get some call on that. And one was, uh, station with this, tell us that she had changed, uh, retired, cause they had nailed it.
That would have been Ms., uh, Lade or Jerry. Yes, I s- I spoke with her a few hours.
Okay, that's all we've called.
She talking. So she's on Woodland and, uh, uh, you know, so I, I did convey to the contract, I told her that it's gonna be gravel for a while. We'll just try to make it as smooth as possible. And then her best bet was to get out of Woodland and just get right onto Glen, just right around the corner and just to use sixty street. And she was pretty understanding of that. Yeah, I think we're good.
So have you had any, uh, more complaints or people getting, uh, nails and tacks?
No, um, I have driven up that street and make a point to do it and not only in the village car, but my personal car multiple times just to make sure how it's traveling. And, uh, yeah, it's rough right now. I mean, it, it is.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but it is, is drivable. I, I hope most people get the hint to just get off of that road, you know, there's, there's many of other ways around yet. And just to scoot over to a sixty street. We're not gonna put a sign to you to route because it is still open to local traffic, but, um, just anecdotally and observationally seeing how it's functioning, most people are getting out of there.
Yeah.
And just, they don't wanna drive on if you want to have.
There's gonna be a couple of problems open up too, you know, especially that one in Ravensdale, there's a couple of dividends.
I, I did notice that he still has his crater and the roller park just kind of right across from the dance studio here. And so if that stuff does happen, yes, it will be taken care of it for, for me, this, for the duration while it's wrapped.
Okay.
Well, yeah, by the end of this week, so here's just a quick update, this by the way. Um, and you'll see a little lull here, um, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I think Wednesday's gonna be a pretty big rain day. And then by Thursday or Friday is when we're gonna start seeing all the, a lot of removals happening. So they're removing all the curb on both sides of the street. Um, the sidewalk on the east side and the north of the bridge, there's just curb on the east side that we rip it all that out. Um, and, uh, the pulverizer will show up in, over by Trustee Owens' house too and pulverize that. There's another cul-de-sac, yes, the pulverizing team on El Fort. Um, but yeah, by Friday, I think it's kind of see a small army of guys ripping out concrete. So it's gonna get a little worse before it gets better, but they gotta take it all up and put it back together.
Do they do the same thing for asphalt that they do for concrete? You get the, uh, uh, or did they?
No, so the concrete will get ripped out mainly just like with, um, I think you call it a rain hole, but it's like an excavator with a bucket and they, they kind of pull that out with the bucket. The, the asphalt, there, there's like this big drum on front and it, best way I can describe it, just kind of chews it up and it, it turns it into granite.
Right.
Yeah. Yep, it's a big drum on front, some big teeth on it and it just chews it all up. Um, no, the concrete will physically get like removed in big chunks, put it in a truck and then haul out.
Any other questions, uh, concerning agenda?
Yeah, I understand. One, this is in regards to the liquor license, I guess, there's a, what's the price? On the, what are they trying?
Um, it's one hundred dollars for beer and five hundred for intoxicating liquors, so most of them, six hundred.
Yeah, and then item C, I just wanna let you know while the village staff is recommending approval on all. Uh, we've been working with the North Shore, uh, fire department specifically on Four Point Sheridan. Um, they've, uh, there, there's been a number of fire code items that they've been trying to work with them on and haven't been seeing the progress that they would like. Um, so in talking with the fire chief, we're still at a point we would recommend approval. But if they don't get those addressed by next year, we're gonna be sending, i- if approved tonight, we would send them some firm language that those would have to be all addressed by next year if they would still want their liquor license to be approved. Uh, or recommended for approval. So I just wanted to note that to all of you. So you weren't surprised with that discussion next year if they still hadn't addressed their, their, their code violations. Okay?
So fo- following the follow, did I hear last, the last meeting that's gonna be a Starbucks inside the target?
Well, that was part of their site plan, but just know. Yeah, I, I mean, we've been talking with a few groups, very different clientele, like when people go into a, a grocery store and shop, you know. It's very, I mean, it's not super common, but people like to have like a beverage in their hand. Uh, really good example of that is in Shorewood, the metro market has a Starbucks inside. And I kid you not, right across the street on Oakland, there's another Starbucks. Both do very, you know, very fine. It's just a very different clientele. So, yeah, if, if you get ro- questions from residents about that, just let them know. You know, it's not like people are driving to Target just to have Starbucks. It's more of, they're gonna be there for a while and hey, you know, they would want a coffee or a hot chocolate in their hand as they're shopping.
Any more questions on concern agenda? Not like a motion to.
I'm gonna be approved and sent agenda?
There's six. It's been moved by, uh, Trustee High Tower and seconded by Trustee Owens. All of them favor.
For, for the, they said. No, 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 no. Uh, this is, that's where it's going. Uh, because I was relaxing this so long, what, we bet when instead of using High Tower, we use Thompson's over.
Oh, okay.
What she writes is, cause I started hearing to her, big smile, like, okay, yeah, thank you.
Oh, okay.
It's just a continuing, that's the first part.
High Tower, Thompson, Thompson.
It's Thompson.
Okay.
When she did ask permission, we bet when, yeah, so that her, all of a sudden, her, her minutes don't reflect what you said versus what you were.
Oh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And if you vote motion here. Uh, new business can consider ordinance number twenty five dash zero three, order us to amend the B three and B four correct for districts. To allow. Uh, to allow for adult daycare as, as permitted use.
Mm-hmm, that's it. Yep, yep.
Jesse Booker, I can, uh, introduce the topic. This, uh, came before the plan commission, uh, last week. Uh, it was recommended for approval. Uh, there were two extensions and one votes, uh, opposed to the approval, but it did pass. What, uh, what you have before you this evening is an ordinance to allow in the B four district adult daycares as permitted use. It currently exists in our B three district as conditional use. And we have, uh, an application in from Ms. Quinarda Milborn, who was on the call this evening. Who's looking to put an adult daycare into the fifty fifty West Brownie Road building. That is the building east of Taco, directly east of Taco on the northeast corner of the intersection of fifty first and Brownie Road. Uh, so you have the mobile station, Urban Beats, there's a, a small, uh, office building on that corner that has, uh, medical offices on its first floor and Ms. Milborn is looking to occupy the lower level for adult daycare. And, uh, the, the question really before you this evening isn't necessarily directly related to how Ms. Milborn is intending to use that space. She does want to occupy the lower level, uh, with up to twenty four adults, eighty and over, uh, and up to four employees. It would, uh, we think be generally an innocuous land use, something that kind of fits along the line of B four district, which is office. Uh, nail salons are also permitted there, medical laboratories are permitted in that district. And so in talking with our village attorney and other staff, we thought it'd be most prudent to suddenly change our code to allow adult daycares as permitted use. So that's really the question before you this evening is if you want to allow that land use as permitted in the B four district. You'd also change the B three to allow it as permitted. We generally are, are of the opinion that this is different than a child daycare facility, which raises probably more questions about, you know, the safety for the children, kind of where they have recreation space, how they're getting picked up and dropped off, hours. These adult daycares, and this particular one is operating, you know, normal business hours eight to four thirty. Uh, it's adults generally with disabilities are in need of added assistance. So something that does not necessarily raise our level of concern where we felt that it would need a conditional use permitted, need conditions applied to it. So there was a recommendation from the plan commission for, uh, this to be changed in our code to a permitted use. And then this would allow Ms. Milborn, uh, to go forward and seek her occupancy and her licensing from DHS. This would also be a facility licensed through, uh, the state and then she would get occupancy from, uh, the village and the fire department. So, uh, can answer any questions that you have. As I said, Ms. Milborn is on the call, but, uh, as we talked about the plan commission, we really needed to focus not so much directly on her operation, but more on the bigger picture of the, the zoning change.
Okay, so my question is one, we just have a situation where the department felt that human services wasn't really monitoring what was, what they were approving in the building Brownie ID, the adult family commons. So how many of these? They, adult daycare, do we currently have any difference?
We have zero adult daycares. We have, uh, a good handful of, uh, child care centers. And you're correct, that is monitored. We continue to try to work with DHS particularly on the, uh, community-based residential facilities, the CDRFs, the group homes. We're in the process of working with them because there is a statutory, uh, there is a state statute that allows us to limit the number. And you're correct that there is some concern about, uh, about the proliferation of that and DHS just kind of not communicating with us about who their licensing and letting them move forward. And so we're still in the process of working that out with them. The daycare side of things, there is not that same statutory provision that would limit daycares. I also don't sense that there's going to be kind of a, a proliferation of adult daycares per se, that it's gonna be problematic. Uh, again, this is, uh, our B four and B three districts, uh, it's commercial space. Most commercial space probably gonna be too costly, uh, to rent for these facilities. This happens to be more unique kind of office, quasi office in a basement that I think the rent is, is affordable and table.
What do you, rent between, say eighteen?
Any, anyone eighteen and over. So it's for people with disabilities and generally seniors.
That's, we're just going for the free zones, so then you have another process where they can come back and get approval for whatever they want.
They would need their licensure from the state and then they would need occupancy through our inspection department and fire department.
How many people would be served adult daycare?
Uh, it, it's based on square footage.
Yeah.
This particular, uh, space has about twelve hundred square feet. And each occup- or each, uh, uh, person being serviced is required by DHS to have fifty square feet. So they could have up to twenty four at this location, but obviously uh, it's fifty per squ- fifty, uh, square feet per person. And if you have a smaller space, then your occupancy load goes down. If you have a bigger space, well.
So what do they do in state kids? I mean, is it breeding or activities? What do they do?
I, I cannot really say, Ms. Milborn, if, if you're hearing that question, there's a question about what occurs at the daycare facility during the day as you're, as you're watching these individuals.
Um, during the day, I plan to do activities with the client. Um, we can do exercise with the clients. Um, mainly it's like, um, you know, a regular daycare, uh, when they're a, um, guardians, um, have to work with them, so they drop off their person that in need of help, uh, while they at work.
Maybe something I read somewhere was. At some point, didn't those have a concern with a dis- a disabled population? Not really wanting to read, but I thought it's, it might be sitting and walking that I read this in, but about the being service, having persons that are part of a adult daycare coming to local community things like the library, things of that nature, being more disruptive than participatory in what's going on in that particular environment. I don't know if I read that or if that was part of something that was said when we were.
I've not heard that from.
I don't recall.
Parks and Rec or, or the library.
So, Jerry.
Yes.
I was one of those individuals at the meeting that actually abstained or voting on this. There was a number of, of things that was raised. One of those related to outreach to native businesses. Uh, I think when we go through this type of zoning change, we shouldn't notify individual businesses that was close by. So that was the go vote because they don't, they didn't feel that there was any outreach from staff to current businesses. In the end, that this, uh, capacity had. So after listening to that conversation, that's the statement, but tonight I probably would not be voting in favor.
Need to take a separate roll call on that one then?
Yeah, with it, with it, with it being an ordinance, uh, you would do a roll call vote. Yeah.
Any more questions or concerns regarding specific issues? Well, let's, let's take that out and do A through D. All of them favor, uh, Senator Jena, A, B, and D for approval.
Well.
This is under new business though.
This is new business. Yeah, we already approved consent.
Okay. So then we'll take that separately and, uh, do a roll call.
Is there a motion then?
We would need a motion first.
Not quite.
We, we haven't had a motion yet, so we would need a motion for approval.
Prove. Uh, item.
Or, or deny.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I move we, uh, approve ordinance twenty five dash zero five is an ordinance to amend the B three and B four commercial districts to allow adult daycare as a permitted use. Is there a second? Second. So it was, uh, motion by Trustee Woods and seconded by Trustee Grease, uh, to approve. All those in favor, I agree with a roll call. So, uh, Trustee Woods, aye. Trustee Owens? None. Uh, Trustee, uh, Thompson?
Yeah.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Booker? I vote aye.
Then Grease.
Yeah.
Grease.
Oh, Grease.
Aye.
You vote aye, yeah.
Yeah.
And I vote aye.
That's a three, three, so that would not be approved.
Motion doesn't care.
Nope.
And so then the next item. Approval, uh, B, approval of compliance maintenance annual report and adoption of revolution twenty five dash oh eight authorizes submission to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. WB and our.
All right, so some sewer, sewer stuff. So we always talk in, in March or April about our stormwater permit with the DNR and then in June is our sewer permit with the DNR. So there will be operate, own and operate a sewage collection system, which ultimately drains into the LMSD, uh, system, and then that goes down to Brownie, anyways, to Jones Island. Uh, and so we just have to report on our activities for twenty twenty four. Um, the, the, the highlight is you do get graded on this. We did receive an A grade again in the village. Uh, typically the reason for a lower grade is if we had a sanitary sewer overflow or an S S O. And that means where our system was over capacity and we had to like pump sewer bypass, uh, sewer water. We did not have any such events in twenty twenty four. Uh, I would like to think that some of that was due to a lot of the work that we've done throughout the village. Um, and so I'll, I'm gonna focus on just three areas of our sewer system. Okay, so we have, we have, we operate fifty five miles of sanitary sewer. Uh, we do have one or did have one sanitary sewer operator. Dana Faulkner has recently retired. Uh, his last day was June fifth in the village. And he had over thirty plus years of experience, so a lot of kind of institutional knowledge walked out the door then, but we are prepared to, to move forward. Um, we got some other guys that are gonna be in the mix and, uh,
Uh, we got some other guys that are gonna be in the mix and, uh, they're not gonna have solely a dedicated person in the sewer department. But instead, a couple of other individuals that are gonna be able to kind of rotate through. And I always kind of like that because if there's ever a problem and more people that know how to handle things. Um, and so we're, we're plugging, moving forward with that. I think we're in a good spot. Um, our two biggest pro, or three biggest problem areas in the village are, um, what's called the Green Knoll subdivision. And that is bounded by Sixtieth Street to the west, Dean Road to the south. And then about Fifty-sixth Street to the east and, well, not quite Brownier Road, but more like range, uh, uh, on the, on the north side. So it's a big, it's a rec- rectangle area. There's about a hundred and fifty homes in this space. And if it rains really hard, this is typically where we would get an S S O. We've done a ton of work in that neighborhood. All of the sewer mains have been lined. And then we've, uh, started lining about half of the homes in that neighborhood. So they're lateral from the house down to the seventy-five homes. We haven't had an issue, um, in a number of years in that neighborhood, so that's good, but there is still work to be done. Um, and so. Looking to use M S D funding to help, uh, finish off the rest of that neighborhood. A larger neighborhood, which is the Bradley Estates neighborhood, that is in the far southwest corner of the village. So just west of the school, south of Dean. Um, there's about, mm, three hundred and sixty homes in that neighborhood. Um, and if we ever have a problem where it rains really heavy, our problem is at the intersection of Darnell and sixty-first street. Um, this past construction season in twenty twenty-four, we did a, a lateral replacement project in conjunction with our water main replacement. Our crew's actually down there as we speak, um, taking care of the ditch restoration. Uh, we did twenty years sewer lateral, uh, replacements. We've lined in that neighborhood, all of the village sewer main. And then, uh, we're gonna look to move forward with, uh. Using again M S D dollars for some other either lateral replacements or lateral line. But it's been a number of years since we've had an S S O down in that neighborhood too, so. Uh, trending in the right direction. Most importantly, we do have one sanitary sewer lift station in the village. It is, um, coming on the end of its life. It is probably thirty-plus years old and the pumps are starting to labor and we're starting to have problems up there. We've had, we had some problems in April. Uh, we had some problems, uh. About a year ago from now in, in twenty twenty-four. We've done some maintenance on it. I think we have a clean bill of health, but this will show up, um, and we're going through our C I P cycle, uh, for replacement. The lift station, I would argue, is one of our most important pieces of equipment in the village and it's kind of one of those that are literally out of sight, out of mind. Cause it's underground and all you see is the green cabinet up at sixty-seventh and County Line. Right up in that area, there's a green cabinet, it's got a red light on the top. You ever see that red light on at that? It's calling. No, well, we, we get alarmed plenty when that happens, so, uh, but yeah, that red light has not been, um. And so how the lift station works, there's about twelve homes that are tied into this lift station. So all of their sewer water from their homes, they drain into the collection system and that all goes into what's called a wet well. The wet well fills up, there's a pumps, it pumps it down and pumps it into our gravity system. While if that fails, those pumps stop working, that water has to go somewhere. Where does it go? Right up your basement. So, uh, that's why it's not good if you see the red light. Uh, but we're, we're working through some things. I think we're in a good spot with it for right now, but this isn't something that we want to sleep on and we want to. Get in for replacement, uh, just to like replace those pumps, for instance, if we're just gonna do the pumps. Uh, that is about seventy-five thousand dollars. So. There, there's more to the system than just the pumps. Um, you know, there's a control cabinet, there's some other monitoring equipment. Uh, the wet well, uh, and so we, we're not just gonna, we're gonna look at spending seventy-five thousand dollars on the system as a whole because it is all, all aging. Uh, so that's kind of the sanitary sewer system in a nutshell, uh. And, uh, I, I, I showed this what the public groups committee, I, I showed the committee, they have a pretty robust G I S, uh, system. Where there's a ton of data on there and that is all, kudos to Dana, uh, he embraced that and took all of our paper stuff. And before he left, every single thing is scanned and up to date in our G I S. So it's a very, very well-built system. I think we were, I think that was at that meeting, we were looking at some of the committee members, uh, said, okay, who wants to look at their lateral pipe? And Dana's got pictures of the different lateral pipes and you can, you can see stuff, but. Um, you know, all this stuff, it's gotta be monitored and it's underground and buried, so you have to really pay attention to it, uh, because when it fails, it can be pretty catastrophic. But I think we're in a good spot. Like I said, A rating, same as the year prior. And so. We're gonna probably continue that as we go forward, um, without Dana here.
Any other question?
Any? I'm just gonna make a motion. Okay, oh yeah, that, that's, this is resolutions, I think, either, or the, well, this, and then after this is done, I just got an email from the D N R. My report is in there validated, but after this meeting I can go back and submit, but.
We'll do a roll call on this, uh.
We just need a motion.
I move approval of compliance maintenance annual report, uh, C D M R, and adoption of revolution authorized. The middle of the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. Trustee Woods, second. Are you second?
Second.
Okay. So then we do a roll call. Uh, trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Uh, trustee Grease?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
Trustee Owen?
Aye.
And trustee Wood?
Aye.
That is what I asked, Will. So now we'll be, uh, convening to a full session.
How about if we convene the full set?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Call those in favor and say aye.
Aye.
Any vote?
Yeah. Great.
Can you just turn the mic?